You do have a ringer, make sure that your phone is off of duck ringing mode. That's embarrassing.
I would like to call the January 5th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission regular meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Burton.
Present.
Blossom.
Taufest.
Present online.
Smith, Gailey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vada.
Here. Are there any changes to the agenda? And are there any objections to approving the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. And for the minutes of November 3rd, our last meeting in 2021, are there any changes to the minutes? Any objections to approving the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Pretty quick and easy tonight. There are no presentations with prior notice, nor public hearings or unfinished business. But may I have a nomination for Planning and Zoning Commission Chair?
I nominate Caitlin Vada for Chair.
Charlene, are you, did you want to maybe become Chair? Or do you want to, are you happy to stay co-chair for the time being?
I'm fine, we're mad, thank you.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Not yet. Are there any objections to selecting me as Chair for 2022? Hearing none, I will be, Caitlin Vada will be the Chair for Planning and Zoning Commission in 2022. And may I have a nomination for Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair?
I nominate Charlene Taufest.
Are there, are there any other nominations? Oh, sorry, may I have a second?
I second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations? You can also nominate yourself. This is, and things do have a manner of moving on and mixing around, so don't worry, your time will come. Or we'll force you when you're not here, we'll just nominate you, that's kind of how it works. All right, are there any objections to selecting Charlene Taufest as Vice Chair for 2022? Hearing none, Charlene, you are the 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair. Woo, loud applause.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up. Somebody does need to do it, and we very much appreciate everyone who does. So is there anyone, so this is for the public comments without prior notice, we don't have any public hears. Are there anyone, is anyone online? And 2021 Year in Review. Thank you for putting that together, Economic Development and Planning Director John Zarneski. Can you take us through that, please?
Thank you. So every year we provide to you the Year in Review that takes a look at the actions, the information that's come before you, and try to give you a summary of that. And so, as you can see on the first page, actually, page 5 of 8 in your packet, I believe, the amount of activity for the Planning Commission was, was down as far as the number of action items that were before you. And that goes without saying that COVID definitely played a role in some of the development activity that occurred in the past year. But normally our, you know, activity that comes before you does go up and down year to year. It's not, you know, a static line, it's not a continuous up, up curve, it's, it's, it's up and down through the years. So in addition to those action items, which included plat reviews, code amendments, and a couple of conditional use permits, we also had a few informational sessions. We had one on the zoning code in general in March. We did another presentation where we looked specifically at the commercial district. And then most recently, we looked at downtown facade design. So those were informational items or work sessions that we held, either during the meeting or after the meeting. On the subsequent pages of the report, you'll see that there's, what we do is list out specifically the items that you reviewed. And I'm not going to go through those, but I will briefly take, or say a few things on page 7 of 8, which is our administrative permit activity. And that did show a slight increase this year. Despite COVID, there was a few increases. And it looks like the largest increase was in site plan reviews and community event signs. Those went up, so overall, it was about a 20% increase in activity as far as permitting activity in, in the Planning and Zoning Department. I also list there other activities that have occurred in 2021 that you've, you've certainly been informed of or you'd help advise us on some of these things, including the All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. That was finally adopted by the city and then went on to the borough for their adoption, and then on to FEMA for their adoption. And so that, that is complete. We are now up to date in our mitigation plans and eligible for federal grants. Let's see, we worked on the Spruce Park Beetle Grants, Economic Development Administration Grants, CARES Act Grants, a lot of, a lot of different grant activity. We worked on the, the outdoor dining program. We've got four traditional storefront improvement grants were awarded in 2021, including one virtual storefront grant. We've also continued, or I should say concluded, the right-of-way landscaping. So that was the beautification, the tree planting, the flowers. So those, those dollars, that was a capital project, those dollars have been fully expended, and that, that program is complete. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions on, on the annual report.
I should know this, but I heard the spruce beetle funding that you applied for, is that still waiting? Is there an update?
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of an update, it's, it's not much. We are scheduled to have a conference call with FEMA next Tuesday. And the point of that discussion will be to talk about the environmental assessment, which is required for this project. And so we're hoping that it's a quick assessment. We don't plan to do any ground disturbance, so we're hoping this goes quickly and we can get the, get the EA completed and then hopefully kick off the, the program sometime this year.
And sorry, remind me, is it just on city property, or is it also for residents of the city?
Just city property.
Okay. And was there any funding available for residents via?
Not through this program, no.
What was the overview of that program again? Was it just to clear out trees in town?
So it's a, it's a wildfire mitigation grant. And it's through FEMA, and we identified a number of city-owned properties that have fire hazard, and it's mainly beetle-kill trees that are, of course, causing the problem. And so what this grant would allow us to do is go in and do a harvest on dead dying trees, as well as any other types of trees that are there, in, in a number of different techniques to include, you know, everything from doing the FireWise type protection, which is a lot of thinning and trimming up, to more substantial types of clearings where you're protecting space around buildings to ensure that they're not going to be impacted by not only fire, but things like wind throw as well.
And the grant would be to the city to distribute the funds? Or would individuals be allowed to apply for some of their trees on their properties?
No, it's, it's only for trees on city-owned property. So that is something that we've been reviewing and researching and trying to find dollars for, for, you know, for our residents, but it's very limited. Alaska Forestry's got some programs, but they're mainly for larger lot holders, you know, like five acres or greater. So there isn't, there isn't a whole lot out there. What most people find relief in is if they happen to have trees that are adjacent to a power line. And then HEA will come in and take care of them, or, or some other utility, and those will come in and take them out.
Thank you. Does that conclude the 2021 in review?
It does.
Man, that was a fast year. I know there was a lot of work done, thank you. And now economic, let's see, land uses within the city of Saldana's Downtown Core. I think that's the packet in front of us. Again, John, take it away.
Thank you, and Jen and I will, I think, share in this. But to start, what we wanted to provide to you is a look at land uses within really our downtown core. And we wanted to share with you what's there, and then get your thoughts and opinions on whether we have the right uses in the right places. Are we missing some uses that we'd like to see? And to help us through this discussion, we've created this PowerPoint, but also given you a copy, I believe, of our zoning code. And so you, you can follow along if you like, and, and what, what we've done, and if you go to the next slide, is we've identified this commercial district study area. So this is what we kind of thought of as our, our main downtown core on the Sterling Highway. So we went into this with the thought that, you know, in the future, there may be a riverfront development district. But there also just may be a separate zoning district for this part of our city. And so what you see here, outlined in red, is the commercial zoning district basically between the edge of town to the south, which is over by the, what is the name of that marine? I know, I can't even think of it. River and.
River and Sea Marine.
Yeah, River and Sea, and then all the way out towards. Eddy Camp and the Acapulco, yeah. So that's the area, and, and again, within that red boundary, that is all commercially zoned properties. It does not include, even though they're, you know, in the area, our city parks or some of the other institutionally zoned things like our, our police department and CES. So let's go to the.
Is it including Centennial?
It does not, no. That, that is separate from Centennial.
Okay, that's just where the visitor center is, it looks like.
Right, visitor center, and then I believe there's another parcel of land there or two that may be owned by the state. So again, to talk a little bit about why we're doing this, it's one to, to share with you kind of our existing uses, what kind of trends we're seeing, and again, to evaluate whether the uses we have here are appropriate and desired, and also to think about the future and the land uses that we want to encourage. And so what we're going to try to present to you is, and, and we are going to present this to you based on our zoning code. So we're going to show you, first, the uses that we found within that district that are principally permitted. And that means basically they, they are allowed with an administrative permit. And then we're going to also show you those uses which are conditionally approved. And those, of course, are the ones that come to you. And so again, that's the reason we gave you the zoning code. So let's go to the next one. So Jen, you did all the grunt work on this. Do you want to share anything on this slide? This is, this is our, our view, kind of how you gathered the data, I think, would be helpful, and then perhaps what you found.
Yeah, initially, John and I looked at the parcels and what the predominant use was per parcel, but things like the Blazey Mall or Peninsula Center Mall, and there's other, you know, kind of strip malls that have multiple uses per parcel. We wanted to get a more complete look at what is present and what the commercial district is made out of. So at first, we did start with parcels, and then we expanded that. So I went to every single parcel within the, the study area, and I wrote down the businesses that were present, and we categorized that into what uses they were within the zoning code. And so some of them you'll see are, again, like John said, the permitted principal uses, and some are the conditional uses, and then there were some outliers. So right here is kind of everything all lumped together. And there were some kind of gray areas, and John and I made judgment calls. For example, there might be some lots that are used kind of for parking lot, but are really quite vacant. Kind of one thought is right behind Safeway, Alaska Cab owns that lot, and they do park there, but we consider that vacant. So there's some, some things like that where we had to think about certain parcels and certain usage. I guess that's, that's kind of the main gist of it. So this is just looking at every single use that is present and what those businesses and what those offices and things like that, you know, the percentage that they make up of our commercial district.
We've got this same information shared on the next slide, but in a version of a bar chart that may be a little easier for you to take a look at. And when you look at this, there's three uses that really are, that appear to be dominant. And let's see if I can read them from here. I believe retail, office, and restaurants, eating places are the top, you know, the big ones where we see most, most uses. And then we've got a couple that are in between, the financial services and automobile-related services. And then the rest down the bar chart are, are, you know, minor.
And these are percentages of, it's basically just numbers of businesses, it's not percentages of land use.
Right, these are actual number of businesses.
Auto would have been much huger because they have such big footprints, but it's just number of businesses.
Right, and so that also would be an interesting way to look at that, and maybe that's something to take note of, is, you know, what percentage of land use these are.
Yeah, and also on, on auto. Auto parts stores, for example, are.
Retail.
Retail, so then they're in.
And auto sales.
Auto sales, gas stations, you know, Magnum. Yeah, right, that, no, that, no, it's not, it's not retail, that would be in the automobile.
Okay.
Fueling, service, sales, repair.
And this might be a good time to look at the code. So these categories are taken directly from the code, so I'm going to switch over real quick, and the code's in front of you. And so, just one moment. So with this, you know, section B of 265, we see the code. So for example, automobile, boat is actually, you know, line three, automobile, boat, cycle, mobile home, RV, trailer. And it describes everything that is encompassed in that category, and so that's where those categories come from.
And we're going to come back to, I think, that pie chart a little later. But what we want to do is share also with you a little bit more on some of the other uses that we saw. So actually, would you go back to the pie chart? One of the big slices was other. And so we wanted to share with you, or it wasn't other, I'm sorry, was it other? Where is it?
9% on other.
Okay, thank you. So let's go to, let's go to that slide, Jen. So use is listed as other, so a lot of, you know, on-off kinds of things, animal care, light industry, some lodging, Dragonfly Art Gallery, the go-kart track, there's a, the retention pond is an interesting one as far as trying to identify it as a use. Mobile home parks, and I think we've got one more slide on it also. Assisted living, the marijuana business, campgrounds, food locker, and so on. And, and I think like Jenny, you were saying earlier, I mean, you, you, a lot of times you think a lot, a lot of these uses you would categorize, I think, you know, as retail, but because of our zoning code, how it's listed and how we treat them, that's why we put them into these categories, so. So that's why that 9%, there's, you know, a lot of things that.
Well, yeah, and if you were doing it, percentage of the land use, like the lodging would be a lot bigger than it looks here, where it's just a tiny portion of that other.
Right.
The Aspen and the RV parks and the Keene River Lodge. There's quite a bit, I mean, land use-wise, I feel like.
Right.
It's pretty well represented along the strip. But it doesn't really reflect that in this.
Let's go to the next one, I'm trying to remember what we've got next here. Oh. So we also wanted to look at what uses, you know, looking at the zoning code again, what uses weren't in this, this small, you know, core area of our downtown. And so that's what this list represents. So we don't have any concert halls, we don't have any churches, we don't have any clubs, daycares, storage lockers, funeral homes, greenhouses, parks, well, we have parks adjacent, but not in the district. Schools, theaters, wholesale sales, and repair services. And some of those, you know, you might think, yeah, maybe, maybe, you know, it would be great to have some of those things in our commercial district. And so again, that's, it's part of this discussion is, you know, what's here or what's not, and what kinds of things do we want to track down the road? Any comments on what, what's not present in the study area? It is, but it's not in the commercial zoning district. So. Right, so our commercial zoning district actually allows parks to be within the district.
Right.
So if somebody could develop a park privately, and we would, you know, grant them a permit. But because our park, Saldana Creek Park, is zoned institutional, or actually parks and recreation, it's not included in the study, we only looked at commercially zoned lands.
So the Saldana Downtown Core, I thought was a, it potentially could be. My understanding was that it was a core that was the downtown, and not just a, a map of the commercial zone. But that's okay.
Yeah, no, it's, this is, was strictly for the, the purpose of being able to quantify within the commercial district. We wanted to look specifically at that district and, and identify, you know, within this, this zoning district, are there, are there issues with, you know, what we've got here, what we don't have here, what we'd like to see here in the future? You're, you're absolutely right, we've got a park in our downtown, and it's wonderful. It's just not in the, it's just not included just because it's, it's not in the zoning district, but yeah.
Could just ask the question. I know that you haven't, haven't done anything with the Keene I Spur, but there is a lot of commercial along there, and a lot of those items that you say we don't have are in that area.
Right, there are some, yeah, it's, it's a mix, like we have some, some storage facilities. Right, we've got churches, even there, though, like if we followed that same pattern, we'd say the churches are, are not in because they're in the institutional district. But, but it's just like the park, they're there, we know they're there. But for, for this purpose, because again, it's, there's been this focus within the community to take a look at our, our, our main Sterling Highway strip, we wanted to focus solely on the Sterling and not on the peripheral edges, whether it's the spur or farther out towards the golf course or wherever. We just wanted to focus in on this, this core part of our downtown.
And I think this ties back into a conversation we've had many times about walkability. What, what do we want to have, like concentrated in a downtown area versus a commercial district as a whole? So I, I think, you know, maybe looking more at the code aspect versus what's actually present on the land can help guide that.
Yeah, I mean, I would have, I guess, a question, looking at the principal uses not present, to have a discussion of maybe we would want to add another sub-zone or something so that we, like if there was some of these that we would be like, none of these are here now, and actually, we would rather not have it be open to some of these. And then, so that way, we, we would be able to keep it more like walkable, commercial.
Can you say that again, I'm not sure I follow.
I'm just looking at the permitted principal uses not present in the study area, and wondering if it would be a time to take an opportunity for us to say we, we might not ever want to have storage lockers in that area. So then they, they would be allowed elsewhere, but we would maybe have to rename the, the, or have, I don't know how that would work.
Or specify the uses of the area.
Take the area that we have and, and change its name of the zone. Primary commercial zone, or, I mean.
Yeah.
Is that, is that kind of like something like here that we would have an opportunity to do here? Where we're not like kicking anyone out, but we don't, maybe we don't want to have funeral homes and.
Right.
Daycare on the main strip, where daycare fits really nicely in with like, where there's the, and closer to the hospital, you know, and just off the main drag.
No, that's, that's, no, exactly the, the point of the.
Okay.
Yeah, discussion.
And wholesale sales, like we, the hostess is right there, I don't know if, if they're considered a wholesale.
We debated on that one specifically.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember our discussion on that.
I can pull up the power or the spreadsheet. Yeah, I guess that's what I was kind of getting at. Like the, my understanding was that this was potentially a new zoning district, like a downtown overlay district almost on top of. Because we have other commercial zoning districts in our city, and so this feels, yeah, like extra special downtown, walkable. You know, in our future plans of the city, we'll hope to make this more and more of a downtown or something. Well, and when we're looking particularly at the downtown plan that goes along the river, if that ever gets to be developed, we may want to prohibit some of these things from being in this area. Guide Services, Johnson Brothers is there, I assume. But that does seem like it fits in our, I mean, we are a fishing city on the river, so I think that that, we wouldn't want to disinclude that.
And you got, I mean, some of this was judgment calls based on John and I's knowledge. Like, for example, you said hostess, and we had, you know, Regal Foods LLC is parcel 602. You know, we have the data behind it, but we just hadn't made a judgment call on retail. But if you were to say, actually, I think that's more wholesale, and you have background knowledge, I think that, we value that too.
I believe Regal Foods is wholesale. Johnson Brothers is a guide service.
I think we had put Johnson Brothers, you know.
They do have a retail.
Retail, but again.
They also have retail, so I don't know if it even matters.
But I think all these, all these are good because we have such a small town, and one number does make a difference, it is representative. And so I, we want to have the most complete data set if we are to make some changes, so yeah, definitely appreciate that.
Repair services, we used to have Jensen's, I think, in, on the spur, where you were saying we have some of that. I don't know if anyone's doing appliance repair anymore locally, but.
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And if we did prohibit some of these, would that mean that they couldn't even like move into the Peninsula Center Mall? I mean, that, I don't know if you would want to get that restrictive.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's actually a really good question. I would think it'd be new development on vacant lots, right? I mean, that'd be the main focus of what do you want to see new, but I guess they could reuse old buildings or move into a mall. Would be the same difference.
Right.
But if they, you know, I don't know, if they move into something like that, like a strip mall, does it, does it limit currently what that business is allowed to be?
I don't know, John, is that, um, are there things that aren't allowed in our commercial district that wouldn't be allowed to move into a, uh, an existing mall or space?
They can't rent a space.
Not sure how the code, I don't really know how the code works.
No, basically what we'd be looking at is, you know, i- if there's something that's prohibited or is conditional, then it would either come before you, or we would say, no, that use is, is not allowed within, within, within it. So, for example, I think you, you said like, um, refriger, you know, appliance repair. That type of use is allowed within the commercial district, so that could go into the mall. So, yeah, no, we would, we would look, even if it isn't a mall, if it's a prohibited use, it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what would trigger that? Because when someone moves into a, a tenant moves into a space, they don't come to the city necessarily, do they?
Right, it would probably be a complaint, it would be a complaint type of thing. Jen, can we go to the conditionally used part? Because we've talked about principally permitted uses, I think, and the conditional uses. So these are the uses, again, in the code. They're fewer in number and they require your approval. And, let's see, so the largest number of uses in this study area that are conditionally approved are dwellings. And the majority of them are located over by the, um, the Acapulco and St. Elias. There's that area that is commercially zoned, that actually is off the highway, and includes a lot of small residential homes. But there's other residential uses too, including like Timber Wolf. There's a triplex behind or across from Arby's on, on the river. One of the ones, Jen, oh, there's a couple behind Dairy Queen that are owned by the Ishis. So there's a mix of, of residential uses within our, our existing commercial district. Then we've got a few multifamilies, a couple of which I mentioned. Some different institutional uses, including nursing homes, healthcare related, recreational vehicle campgrounds, and then last, oh, duplexes. Apparently we have one duplex. And then let's go to the next one, that's, so we did the same thing with conditional uses as we did with the principally permitted use. We, we looked at the list in the code and said, okay, you know, we know what's there, what's not there, and that's what this represents. So outdoor, animal boarding, boat boarding basins, uh, community correctional residential centers, townhouses, heavy industry, handicap institutions, healthcare institutions like convalescent homes, lumber yards, storage yards, and warehousing.
Above retail spaces, is that how the townhouse is?
Townhouses that have a, a shared wall and can number from anywhere from two to, I think in our code allows up to eight units could be connected by a shared wall. So they're, they're typically side by side rather than on top.
So it's a duplex or, but with whatever number? Is there a word for, um, housing attached to retail? Like that, what you would see in a downtown area?
Yeah, I think most people would just call it a mixed use.
Apartment, mixed use, okay. Yeah, I mean.
That's how it's typically referred to.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how we incentivize things that we're lacking right now in our downtown, and whether it's like if you are willing to put housing on top of retail or, or put mixed use in, then you won't be taxed for 10 years, or, I mean, you know, et cetera. Like if there's things that we really want, how do we encourage those types of additions to our downtown area? And probably the carrot is better than the stick.
And if we, uh, if we do happen to receive our grant from EDA, we're hoping that, you know, that project really will lend itself to that type of concept where we'll be able to start from scratch and encourage new development that has that retail function on the lower level and an upper level that would potentially provide our housing. And it could be, you know, some spectacular housing too along the river, it could be, you know, really nice stuff. So I think there, you know, that, that's an exciting thing to think about down the road. But one of the things that, that, um, I get, I think most people don't think about in the Soldatna downtown is the actual large number of housing that we have downtown. It's, we've got a fair amount of apartments and homes in our downtown, especially the, you know, when you think about Timber Wolf in, in particular, that's the largest number of units of any kind of housing that we have. So I, I'm happy, initially I wasn't too excited about the, the Timber Wolf development, but as, as kind of the thinking on, on downtowns has evolved, you know, the idea of having someone in your downtown living there that can walk out their front door and visit your business and, you know, go ahead and, and either buy a slice of pizza or go over to, you know, the neighborhood store. You, you know, it's, it's there, so that is encouraging that we do have some downtown housing at this point.
So what's the grant that you're talking about that would encourage?
That's the one for the riverfront redevelopment, it's EDA or the Economic Development Administration, so I, it's, sorry if I
It's, so it's, it's been applied for, but it's just in the book?
We're waiting to hear, yeah, we were, we were hoping to hear, you know, a month ago, but, um, we'll, we'll let you know as soon as we hear something. Let's go to the next one. Oh, I forgot that we did this, we also looked at non-conforming uses within the study areas. So we've got a few here. And these are uses that aren't, you know, that are presently not permitted, either administratively or conditionally within our, our commercial zoning district. Our past codes may have allowed these uses, but through time, you know, they're, they're no longer allowed. So they are mobile home parks, the retention ponds, and some accessory buildings in some cases. So again, you know, this is something to think about and look at as to whether we want to keep them in this case as being not allowed within our commercial, within this area. Or there's options, you know, again, it's, you know, there's options for like a, allow them conditionally or allow them with administrative permits. Retention ponds is, is another one. They might be viewed as an accessory use or alternative, alternatively, we could allow them as like in a, uh, is, is just an allowable use within the commercial district. But for whatever reason, you know, those two detention ponds that we've got in our commercial district are on commercially zoned lands.
They're ours, is that city land or is that state?
No, those are state detention ponds.
Okay.
Yep. But it could also be rezoned, it could be, you know, classified as institutional use or, or, you know, something.
Because they're not going to move those anytime soon.
Yeah, it's, it's just kind of an odd, odd use within the downtown.
When mobile home parks are not allowed because they're mobile, I mean, like, I feel like everyone who lives in the mobile home, I'm thinking of down by the river, it's, um, those people live there permanently or seasonally. It would feel, it would feel pretty, I don't know, to, yeah, to not allow a mobile home or to say, you know, those people need to leave in order to make way for fancy apartments, feels pretty not right.
Well, currently under the zoning district, yeah, mobile homes, or, or, or mobile home parks, I should say, are not permitted.
Is there a way of, um, say they're grandfathered in, but they're not allowed to change hands, or? Um, if someone's moving on, that you can't replace it with another mobile home, or?
There are different ways to deal with them.
Maybe they're all rented out, so they probably will stay perpetually?
There are different ways to, to deal with them. You know, some of it, you know, like in this case, it, it can be driven by the owner. If they want to change uses, that's entirely up to them. Our own code, um, basically, these are legal non-conforming uses, they're allowed to continue, they're allowed to maintain them. Most non-conforming codes, including ours, has a, a provision that allows for a certain percent of repair. It's, it's very difficult to, to enforce and administer, you know. What they state is things like, um, you're allowed to repair over the lifetime of this non-conforming use up to 25% of its, its value. And so one is, you know, what is the value, is it the assessed value, is it the fair market value? And then who's going to track these expenses that are, that are made, you know, because it's supposed to be over the lifetime. So if someone takes 5% of the value in 1980, the value of your home may have increased substantially. And, uh, so, so there's, it's just an, it's not a good way, but there are, there are different types of incentives, disincentives to try to encourage these to move, you know, to move from a non-conforming use to a conforming use. But right now our...
And if the property changes hands, does it come into?
It does not, so that use can continue, even with the change in ownership.
Okay. So non-conforming uses, I'm, I'm seeing F, non-conforming residential uses in commercial district, but I don't actually see those listed out.
I'm sorry, Caitlin, what are, I'm, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're...
Oh, I was just trying to understand where the list of non-conforming uses would be for the commercial district.
There isn't a specific list.
Okay.
Basically, it's a use that doesn't show up in 265, 1710, 265, which is a commercial district.
Okay.
So.
It's not specifically enumerated as principal or conditional, then it's not allowed.
Correct, correct, yep.
The, um, retention ponds, is that, um, does it need to be protected in the way it is because it's dangerous to the public, or is there, could it be more park-like? I don't really know, I mean, it's completely protected, so I haven't been back in there.
We've, we've had a, kind of a, well, we had a conversation with DOT that kind of worked around the edges of that, because we had talked about the idea of a trail that would go between Colatti Brothers off of Cobuck, and behind your place, behind, um, the RC Junkin complex, and then come out basically behind the Eureka Mall. And during that discussion, we, uh, we talked to DOT, and while they were fine with the trail running on their property, they weren't fine with removing the fence.
Okay.
They wanted to do two things, one is protect their infrastructure, and two is to, um, limit their liability. They were concerned about someone getting hurt
Okay.
in the pond and...
Okay.
So that, that would be a, probably a tough hurdle to overcome. So let's go to the, the next slide. Jen, you want to talk about the vacant parcels and also the transmission towers?
Yeah. We, we just wanted to look at where it, what, you know, like where are there availability to be developed? And this kind of gives you a pretty good idea of what is vacant and what has potential. And there are some plans, you know, and for, in the immediate future for some of these, but when you're, I guess we were just thinking about long-term is how could this be impacted? I'm not sure, is there anything else you wanted to add?
No, it's, it's, it is kind of surprising to see that there is a fair amount of vacant property. It's, some of it is, you know, restricted in, in one way or another, or, um, but there are, there are some select pieces left. You know, and some of them require, like, you, you know, of course, towards Acapulco, there's a number of lots that, I think it's probably about 10 or 12 lots on the, the south side of Sterling Highway, yeah, there, that would require, you know, combination for someone to do something with, they're all very small lots. But those are the kind of hurdles that are, that are out there that, um, that a developer would have to look at.
The three little lots up behind Peninsula Center Mall, is that Robin Place? Is that?
I believe so.
Wait, I, do we know the history of why the commercial district juts up into the neighborhood?
Yeah.
And evidently before the access was blocked off, which I don't know if that's legally blocked off, or if that Peninsula Center Mall just didn't want people driving down there anymore?
I don't, yeah, I don't think, there's, there's not a legal right of way.
Okay.
Or I should say the right of way stops at the, the peninsula property, so.
So it seems like that little section shouldn't be commercial up there.
Yeah, it, it's, I agree, it's...
I don't think anyone needs it to be either, right? I know there is a business there still, but
Right, it could, right.
it could be there anyway.
It could be limited commercial, it could be something different than what it is.
Yeah, since there's no access to it from the main drag.
And it does, you know, butt up on, on readout, which does have the gleese between Binkley and Birch. It's got a, a fair mix of commercial in there.
Right, so, I, I mean, I don't think they need it to be
Right.
part of this district in order to continue doing what they're doing. It's just interesting seeing it on there.
Yeah.
And the other little vacant triangle, is that what you were saying, is the Alaska Cab?
Yes, exactly right, yeah. And again, just like this little jet out, you know, is commercial. John and I have been talking about how these parcels up here are split zoned, so it's one parcel, but they actually have two zonings within one parcel. So this parcel is actually partially rural residential and partially commercial. And then we also looked at transmission towers within our study area. So there's four towers that we have permits for within the study area. That's just where they're located.
Those are, yeah, I, I guess it's kind of interesting to me because I honestly don't notice them anymore. I'm not sure I really noticed them that much when they went up. But they don't like dominate our, or certainly our landscapers, yeah.
Is there any slide that someone wants to revisit?
Uses listed as other, I don't know if this matters, it just, used to listed as other, and then conditional uses not present, both have animal care outside boarding.
Oh, so...
I didn't know if that was...
I think
I don't know.
that was, let me pull up the code. Might have been a typo on my part. So animal care outside, animal boarding and commercial kennels is a conditional use versus, um, animal care, um, animal boarding, it should have been inside animal boarding for the permitted principal use.
So the blue moose is inside boarding?
I believe so.
Okay. I keep looking at this map to, of vacant parcels, I was just curious, um, you know, there, I see some areas...
I was just curious, you know, there, I see some areas here that look like they're not developed, but when you classified them as, as vacant, was that, you know, I'm looking up here by the map shop and maybe where somebody else lives, this little half-moon blues piece and, you know, things like that. Is that, is that just a little parcel that is owned but undeveloped? Or what does vacant mean?
That there's not a, that there's not a, a use on it.
A use.
Right, so, for example, a parking lot could, is a use. And so even, you know, you, you don't think of it as a, yeah, you might think of it traditionally as vacant, but, you know, according to our code, a parking lot is in allowable use within the commercial district.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, typically it would be a, a parcel without a structure or a use on it. And even if it had like an accessory, an old shed or something like that, if it's, if it's got, if, if there's no use associated with it, we would probably still call it vacant. I'm not sure we had any of those, but.
Well, there's vacant ones that aren't shaded. I think she's asking, does the city own the shaded portions? That's why it's just like a, it's clearly vacant, there's a bunch of trees there. But is the little teal part, is that owned by the city?
Which?
Is that what we were asking?
Even if there was a use on the parcel, if there was a use on the parcel, even if it was predominantly undeveloped, it wasn't considered vacant. Right? Like, so for example, River City Books has a portion behind them that isn't developed, but they are retail and they're an eating and drinking establishment. Does that help?
Yeah, there's, there's many properties like that that have only a small part of their lot is developed. But if it's, if there is a use on it, regardless of the footprint, it would be considered to be in use.
Yeah.
And not vacant.
It's a really helpful map to have. And yeah, I guess like the other map I want is like, you know, where in the city, and perhaps that would include some places like the other portion of the undeveloped lot that, that River City Books is on. Where could these potential things that we're missing potentially have a home? And, you know, you can never assume that someone will want to develop something on their, on their land or, but when I think about our downtown, that's sort of the map that I want. It's like the sandbox that we want to play in.
Right.
Where we are seeing what's possible.
So just to like clarify, Caitlin, you would like to see, for example, I'll pull up, I think this is probably what's the, the biggest one that's probably people are getting hung up on. For example, there is a structure on this lot right here. And there's, it's very large and there's a lot of vacant undeveloped land, but we didn't classify it as vacant. That's what you're looking for is what area is undeveloped with, even if a parcel has partial development on it?
Gosh. Yeah, I suppose I, it would be difficult to, to figure out what area in our downtown corridor is potentially developable. So it's actually quite nice to have the map that exactly of what you created. These areas do not have a use on them. Because, yeah, that resident is right there. I, I know of, you know, whose it is and who knows if they would want to sell it or not, but.
And then, for example, we, the, the old River City Books, this, in the auto, has no use on it. And so we classified it as vacant at the moment, but there is intended use.
It is, it is like if we had a community exercise in 2030, you know, when our 2030 envision Saldana is up, I feel like what usually happens is that the entrepreneurs and the, the business folks of the community come in like, well, I know that they are wanting to rent to someone in particular here. And like, it's, it's sort of just a, a small community. We know who is wanting to rent and who is wanting to sell and who, which isn't really the right, I don't know if that's the right way to, to ideally plan the future growth of the city, but maybe that's the only way you do it.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's, right, that does certainly happen because, you know, like you said, small community. And, and when someone does come in and, you know, is looking for a, a place to locate in Saldana, we certainly do share with them whatever knowledge we have with regard to vacant parcels or land and try to, you know, make those connections so that we, we can encourage development. But it still has to fit within our, our code. But, you know, and again, we're kind of back to why we're here is, do we have the, do we have the right mix? Do we have the right, right uses? So that we are pointing people in the right direction when they do knock on the door? That, that it fits within our plans and within our zoning code.
So should we discuss things that we don't want in our downtown core moving forward?
Sure, I mean, if you, if you guys, you know, have some comments right now about, you know, if you want to go back to the first map, Jen, you know, that, this general area that now that you know, we've kind of gone through what's here, what's not, if you have some, some comments about what, you know, what this area should look like down the road, are there specific uses that, you know, that aren't there that, boy, it would be great to have? That if we were to amend our zoning code, we should make sure we include this or that we should exclude that? Or we should, instead of making this a conditional use, make it easier to get a permit and make it an administrative? Or something that's currently administrative that should have a higher level of review and be a conditional use?
Would it be helpful to pull up the code and look at the permitted uses and conditional uses?
I'll leave that to the commissioners. I don't think most people find the code helpful.
It's nice to have the list there. And maybe this warrants a longer discussion or a further conversation at our next meeting after we've had a chance to review it and come up with, bring forth, maybe that's a better use of time to go home and noodle on it and then come back next meeting and, and have a list of what we do and don't want in our downtown future.
Let's do that. Let's put it on the agenda for.
Even with like, if we had goal, if we were like, oh, wow, that would be cool if we had an assembly or concert hall. I mean, we want to have that as a goal or, or is it more like, yeah, we have Sohigh and maybe that's all we'll ever need here? Right. I mean, do, do we want like a cinema, a 12-plex cinema on our main drag? I mean, part of me says yes and part of me says, hmm, that's probably not the best use of our little. Yeah, but, but we do have some like, you know, we have the, if the fire station moves, that's, doesn't have parking. So I don't know that what you could really do with that, but that's potentially a building that, where River City Books used to be, that's kind of big enough, at least footprint for something like that. And Dan's Automotive Building, I always think if that changed hands at some point and became something community-oriented. Certainly not like things that would, would happen right away, but there are some spaces along there that, or I'll, I don't know, I actually don't know much about the history of this, but the idea of the visitor's center. At one point, they were maybe going to move into the Hutchings Building, which I don't really, I wasn't involved, so I don't know what went, what happened with that. But is that something that still could happen at some point? Is the visitor's center moving?
We are still involved in a lease with Apple. It won't be within the next.
Yep, yeah. For that, for that building, yeah. Because I, during the chamber voucher thing, I was at the visitor's center and went and tried and tried and tried to turn left. And I was just like, I don't know how many tourists we, we lose that are actually interested, pull into the visitor's center, but then they're in summer traffic and they're like, huh, forget it, let's go to home or maybe we'll stop at some of these places on our way back. So that is, I mean, I think that's realistic with our, it's very hard to turn left from our visitor's center to go into Saldana. And it's just very small and compact. And that particular location, just being right there at our city park and at the river is interesting. But there's other possible places along there too, so. I think it would be neat if it was one of our goals for, to have a visitor's center on the main drag on that side of the bridge.
Better entrance and more parking.
This is Shaglin, I, I agree with that. A bigger visitor's center, we can attract people possibly for conventions to come in to the town.
Yeah. And the other comment that I made at the beginning about the automobile autos, you know, I felt like it was going to be a much bigger percentage because they do have a big footprint, whether it's auto sales, auto repair, we have a number of them. Auto parts stores, like I don't think any of them needs to go, but I don't know if there's any way of making it so that like it can only be a certain percentage of the area.
Well, if there was a graph for like square footage of what one is, is it one little lot? Or is it like, it's one building, like Hutchings is huge, but it's just one, you know what I mean?
And Dan's Automotive is, that takes up a huge footprint. And we have Carquest and we have O'Reilly's and we have.
Graph or a pie with what, how much like?
Percentage of the land you, land, yeah.
We can attempt to try to get something like that together for the next meeting.
And I think it'd be good to think about, I mean, maybe what, what you don't want that's currently permitted to just spring up and kind of ruin our vision of 2030 or whatever. If someone was to do that, it's totally allowed. If they want to put their money into it and they buy the property, they can put a funeral home right in the middle of our, and not that those are bad, but is that what we want on our main drag here?
Nothing is bad, but it's where do we want things to be? Right.
It's the last frontier. I mean, there's tons of everything that's everywhere, but do we want it right here on this street?
Right.
We don't want to be like Wassila.
Well, appreciate everybody's comments and thoughts. And, and if you have additional things you think about between now and the next meeting, feel free to email or call Jen or I and we'll add them to the list. And then we'll add this as another agenda item for next time and hopefully have some additional info and then just carry the discussion forward. Maybe we'll have some more pointed questions or direct questions that we could even perhaps share with you in advance? I don't know, we'll, we'll think about it.
Yeah, see if we can interview some family and friends, old and young people who don't drive cars, because I think that's really what we're going for with our, with our downtown is that how can we make it so that a young person and a grandma can live here and get around and get everything they need safely? That's probably one of the higher goals of our eventual downtown. So interview your six-year-old niece and your 90-year-old grandma or your mom.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your work, John.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, and now we're on to reports. Councilmember Hutchins, thank you for joining us tonight. Do you have anything?
I don't have really too much, except we're still in limbo for planning with the Kenai Peninsula Borough. And I did again, fill out my application with the borough and submitted it to the city. So we'll see what happens now that the code has changed. And the only other thing I really wanted to bring up is the fact that Ed Rasmussen died yesterday, who was a big influence on this state, his whole family was, with the Rasmussen Foundation, providing funds for homeless boys and girls club and multitude of other items. And I just think it's, it's a great loss for the state. And that's all I have.
Thank you. See, John, Director of EDNP, report.
I've got a couple of things and I know Jen's got one or two things as well. Some things I don't, not sure if you know or not, but Shelley, our city clerk, has left and is now working for the city of Kenai. So we have our position open here at the city. Also, Police Chief Mulnerick is retiring. And so we'll be looking to fill his position as well. The shop local program for the second year in a row was very successful. I don't know if you read any of the information that the, the chamber put out, but basically they generated, again, about a million dollars of sales within the city over, you know, a month. So super, super stuff. You guys made a decision on a right-of-way vacation a few, I think it was two meetings ago for, it was on Endicott. It was a part of a cul-de-sac. You recommended approval of that. That went on to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Planning Commission. They also recommended approval. That now goes to Saldana City Council. And so the city council has the final say in whether right-of-ways are, should be vacated within the city or not. So that'll be on their next agenda next Wednesday. We're still advertising and currently advertising the one vacancy that we have on the planning commission. So again, if you know someone in town, please encourage them to apply. And Brack asked me, let me see if I can find it, to remind you. I don't know what I did with it, but I believe it is your Public Officials Financial Disclosure Form deadline is coming up. And she said that most of you report on that via the electronic submission. And so I think she, she said everybody has in the past. So she just wanted to remind you and ask me to pass that along. So there you go. And I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
All right, I am going to report on our code violations and give you guys an update on that. We had three notices of temporary sign expirations that we delivered and they were all resolved fairly quickly. We had a citation for an illuminated sandwich board sign that we actually issued and that was a per repeat offender kind of thing that we had given a lot of notice of violations to and given a lot of grace to. And that citation was for $70. We received a couple of complaints that we had two recently front sightly premises as well as a guide service illegally operating, which turned out to be false. And then an RV parking, and RV parking is, you know, allowed in some areas of the city with a time limit of 30 days. And so we dealt with a couple of different areas of the city. And specifically, we focused on Lark Street, Lark Street's down East Street out. And there's been a historic issue with people, you know, perhaps main residences, Anchorage or elsewhere in the state, owning a parcel and having their RV there all summer. And so we sent out a pretty friendly letter and tried to curb that code violation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Associate Planner Hester. Yeah, I feel like we should give you a box of chocolates and like a mace with spikes on it. Be like, man, or a sign that says sign enforcer. Thank you for doing that work. Now we have Commissioner comments and maybe we'll start with Charlene. Thank you for joining us.
Hi, I don't have any comment. Thank you.
Okay, and then start around the room mark.
No comment.
I'd just say thanks, John and Jen, for your presentation here. And I think it's interesting, sparking a lot of conversation. Hopefully we'll have some more feedback for you next meeting. Thanks.
Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, thanks to John and Jen again. They did an awesome job as usual. And the local business program is really, really great. And if we can as a city, if like anything expires and then we can't do it anymore, I highly recommend we somehow make it work again because it just brings in so much money from our citizens and everything dumped back into our local businesses. And I think that's really, really good. And then I'm also going to reiterate that I think that we should put a sidewalk up to St. Elias.
Safe, walkable downtown district so that our people can go and walk to get beer and pizza. So we officially have permission from you to give Paul Ostrander a bunch of flak for stealing our clerk. Okay, be it known, let the record state. Thank you for this presentation and for the conversation that it will continue next time. That it will continue next time after we've interviewed our nieces and grandmothers about what they want in our downtown. Thank you. And yeah, thanks to Ed for all he did for Alaska. And thanks for joining us tonight, Linda. All right, and with that, the meeting is adjourned. And the next meeting will be on February 2nd at 5:30 PM in City Council Chambers.